Yes, I'm sitting.
I will call the regular board meeting to order. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Justice Burns?
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Okay, item number three approved. I ask for motion to approve the general proceedings for the board meeting minutes for February the 13th, 2024.
So moved.
It was moved by trustee John, second by trustee Williams. Got any question? Madam Clerk? Yes.
Justice Bowman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment or questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. His speaker may speak on any item concerning the village assault village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate. Counter replies through both. I'll answer all responses to all questions once all public comment has been concluded. Please state your name.
Prior to my time, I would have asked you.
Pardon me?
I would have it for four. Oh, my name is Rosie Williams-Bate. I am here as the director of the library.
Is that my call? Okay.
Can we restart my time?
Go ahead.
Thanks. My name is Rosie Williams-Bate. I am the director of the library. I do have some talking points that I'm going to run through pretty quickly. And for the audience members who would like to look in the back, I did push them in the back too if you would like to follow along. First thing I want to talk about is the fact that the library has two events coming up. We have an Easter egg hunt on the 23rd and we have a leprechaun hunt this Saturday. Moving past that, Friday, February 29th, trustee Carter came into my library and asked me about some signs around our property. He demanded they were removed three times or else. He told me I should ask my mama about him. And when I told him if he didn't leave, we were going to call the cops.
I said, tell your mama about it. Tell your mama.
Can we pause my time because I was respectful? I have always been respectful to you.
Go ahead.
So contacted the police chief via phone, came to the village hall to speak with the village administrator and the mayor. While I was waiting to speak with them, the police chief spoke with me. I went to the police department. But I did leave word that I still wanted to speak with the village administrator and the mayor because the village has no jurisdiction on the property of the library. Telling me to remove signs that he was going to come back with a crew. I should remove them or else. That's inappropriate. But that's what happened. A police report was filed. We now have a court date because a sitting trustee tried to come into a different taxing body and talk about us. I did explain why the signs were there and that can be all read in here in the talking points. I was going to let it go until court. Then I received a text message that talked about a neighborhood Facebook group talking about the signs and how they needed to come down and how their tax dollars built that building. Okay? Now, the trustees got the copy that I got in the text messages. There isn't individual's name on there that was not redacted because that's how I got it. The copy that are on the back table, I took the respect of that individual and redacted her name from the copy that's on the table, stating, if only we could get the library to pull those signs down. This is an opportunity for village residents to participate in baseball. Y'all have been up here tonight cussing and busting at each other. This village doesn't have an audit. You don't have bank reps. You don't have, you got $10,000 missing out of a safe that nobody knows where it is. You got $78,000 that was brought in, but you don't know where it went. You haven't had a TIF meeting since 2017, which is a violation of a state statute that I should have been present at any meeting that you had had. I've asked for minutes and nobody can find them. You can't find assigned contracts. You can't find assigned ordinance. But the residents are concerned about signs on my property that give an opportunity for children in this town to do something. Trustees are concerned about trying to get the children of this community to do something just because it didn't have Saw Village's name on it. But you're not concerned about the $10,000 in cash missing or the $78,000 or your audits or your bank reps or giving raises to people who aren't doing their jobs? That's not a concern, but those signs are a concern? Think about that. I'm asking the board to think about that. I'm asking the residents to think about that. Those signs at a library are not that important. I do encourage you to read it because there was some other pertinent information about the Black History Month information that was set out that was leaving a couple people out.
How you doing? My name is Deion Woodard. I'm a local business owner.
Deion.
Deion Woodard.
Deion Woodard.
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 Yes. How you doing? I'm a local business owner, a rental property owner, fix and flipper investor in a property in the township and also a resident of the town. So my main concern in town, I'm looking at your presentation of orders and resolutions. And I see you guys have a new company you're going to bring out for an inspectional company. My main concern is the previous inspection company that you had in the township and the way they were charging investors and individuals trying to do work in the town. So my question is, are we taking any action against this company that was previously here for the simple fact I've obtained different areas permits? I've worked on your police department and other things in the town. So I did work on a property at the corner of 225th and Nichols. I did work on, I'm working on another property on 225th Street, same identical work. My permit cost me double the cost. When I asked State Bill about why the permit cost more, they replied to me by saying that State Bill doesn't make enough money. So at that time, I got mad, sat back and say, I got to get this project done. I paid the cost. So I came into the township about two weeks ago to get a permit extension because I believe my permit was expired. At that point in time, a young lady from State Bill by the name of Isabel told me, hey, your permit is not expired. Then she gave me an itemized list of what I was charged for. They charged me for 10 additional inspections as if I had failed inspections that hadn't even happened yet, which resulted in an overcharge of $500. So I'm trying to find out, is the village going to do something in retrospect to this or do I need to go obtain an attorney for this matter? As a person in business, I've never failed an inspection. So I do have concern about that. I want to know if we're going to go at State Bill for the amount of what they overcharged and pull records on what they did charge your contractors, residents and so forth. But what are we going to do as far as that? That's everything.
Kathy Venture? I haven't been here for a while, so I may be not up to speed on some of the things that are going on. But I wanted to find out, I haven't heard anything more about the medical building that was supposed to be going up. I'm just curious as to if we're still going to be getting the medical facility. The other thing, I was under the understanding that we're getting a dispensary and we're getting another restaurant and another gambling casino or facility. I myself don't believe that Saw Village can support those. I think instead of putting in a dispensary when we have one at the end of Saw Trail and 30 and one at Saw Trail and before Saw, before Chicago Heights, South Heights. This is kind of redundant. People aren't going to buy in from the dispensary when you can get it cheaper on the street. So we're not getting anything for our village. But instead of these businesses, how about if we get a grocery store? People are begging for a grocery store. Hey, we could even put in a laundromat. Something that this village needs, not something that may generate some taxes. Thank you.
I'm Francine Anderson, again at 1606. I would just like to say what I just saw for your special meeting. Two hours and 20 minutes prolonged by trustees. You set the agenda. You called the meeting. And for it to take two hours and 20 minutes is just totally unnecessary. You had this meeting coming behind. I see it as being disrespectful to every resident that sit here in this audience, especially for those who had comments that were legitimate for this particular meeting. The only other thing I would like to say is that since the board is saying that everything is being blamed on the mayor, I would like to say since you are putting this as you doing your job, then I would like for you to do your job better and do it well. Because taking two hours and 20 minutes out of my time where you have explained nothing about what you proposed or what you called the meeting for, I will make sure and I'll tell you that today. I will send this to the PAC myself because I think you really just outdoing your responsibilities that you owe the residents of this town. You will be getting that very soon. For Rosie and the talking points, I'm sorry that there's a disagreement, but for the trustees that are reading the notice of your talking points, I'm hoping that you will find it in you, all the trustees, to find a way to recruit children and have them participate in the planned activities that some of your committees could be doing, trustee Burns, while you're having financial committee workshops for the community.
David Smith, resident. Number one, I have a question. What's going on with this financial seminar that's being promoted by the Public Health and Safety Committee? Number one, there's a typo on it. Somebody misspelled learn. So technically, somebody needs to learn how to spell. Number two, who authorized this? What certifications, licenses or degrees does trustee Burns have to be selling her financial services to the residents? And what happens to the money? I'm just curious about this. Again, getting back to what we were discussing earlier, I heard trustee Burns say, we can't get any financial grants or anything. She didn't say that two weeks ago when she was standing in front of a $1.2 million check that was provided by the state. So I would expect everybody to get their statements correct and not mischaracterize things for their own personal gain. As far as the employees go, we still have been given no reason as to why you did the salary cuts other than the fact that you could. No one questioned whether you could or you couldn't. We asked why. And just because you can, to me at least in the minimum, is not a fair and responsible answer. What else? The respect level is in the toilet. Everybody wants to blame the mayor for everything. When you guys sat up and you had your diatribes, the mayor didn't say a word. Run the cameras back. Run your recorders back. You all want to constantly interrupt. And then trustee Burns, her new thing now is, I want this person banned from a meeting. Start by banning yourself. You've been more disruptive and disobedient and disorderly than the majority of the people in these meetings. On numerous occasions, you're always late and you've got about a 40% you-call-off rate. You need to get your act together. Lead by example. That's it.
Okay. In regards to the comments that were made, I'm not going to comment on anything that's, I guess, if I was in the courts or I'll wait and see how that plays out in regards to that particular comment and the papers that were accompanying that. And the gentleman about State Bill, State Bill meeting, first time I'm hearing that, so believe me tomorrow and then the village administrator just urge you to say something about it too. So we will address that. The fact that, well, get back to you, Mr. Woodard, about that because if there's something going on that we're not aware of, we need to know and I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. The clinic, which is on that property that's right next to Sugar Shack, we still waiting on what they have to say. I think there's a clause in the contract that we had with them that there's a certain timetable, so that may or may not be happening. But we had a, it was more than just a dispensary that was going to be brought here to the village. So it may be another demonstration coming or another presentation coming because it's more than just a dispensary that they're trying to bring here into the village. So that's something that I'm kind of excited about because it's more than just a dispensary. It's going to be a restaurant and another thing that's going to be involved in the village. So if everything else was a comment and I appreciate your comments and I will move forward. Reports of officers, the mayor's report. I have a couple of things to bring. First, the Easter egg hunt. Easter egg hunt will be March 30th at 12 o'clock. It'll be right behind the, the community center, which is where it's always has been, right past the, right, just right behind the basketball courts and everything. Please come out, bring the kids ages zero to 13. So come out. There's a lot of eggs. If you ever want to see somebody pick up 5,000 eggs in 10 minutes, come out and see it. Because believe me, they can, they pick up those eggs quick. And we'll have Easter, we have baskets and some of the eggs will have a certificate in there to get them an Easter basket. So please come out again, that's March 30th. Also, the village-wide cleanup day is Saturday, April 27th. And hoping that we can get volunteers that we get every year to go around the village in different areas to clean up the garbage and papers and things that people throw out. But we are looking for volunteers to come out to help us do that. And hopefully, last year it was, it was great and hopefully this year will be the same way that we can get people to come out to do that. That's, I'm sorry, that's Saturday, April 27th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So that we're going to meet, depending on the weather, either we're going to meet in the senior center if it's real cold out, or we'll meet right here at the, where we have the picnic tables and everything that's there. And we will have refreshments after this is over with. So that's all that I have at this particular point in time. I will be going down to Springfield on lobby day and I'll be talking more about that to try to lobby for us some more resources, grants or whatever it is that we can try to get our hands on to enhance the village. Okay, madam clerk?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I would like to motion that we bring the accounts payable to the forefront.
You can't do it now. That could have been, should have been at the beginning of the meeting.
Well, we are at the beginning of the meeting.
No, we're not. We're into the meeting already. What's the reason for bringing the accounts there for us to begin?
Because I, I need to leave.
Okay, well then you'll have, I think there's enough people to carry the vote out.
No, I would like to motion. So I'm actually making a motion to move the accounts payable to the front.
That has to be done at the beginning of the meeting.
Wait.
What you're trying to ask is to have the agenda.
I'm asking to move the accounts payable.
The agenda to be changed.
No, well, I'm asking.
Can we do that at the beginning of the meeting?
And we are at the beginning of the meeting.
So we're not.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to disrupt you while you were talking.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that you should have said this before we started the meeting.
Well, I didn't want to interrupt. I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to just make sure we do this properly. So I waited, I waited for, I waited for you. So I'm motioning, I am motioning.
I motion to bring that.
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bowman, would you please answer that for me?
I think the mayor's correct. Typically, the motion, the agenda is established at the very beginning of the meeting. And motions to amend are typically considered then.
Excuse me, attorney. Mr. Bowman, attorney Bowman? Can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me, attorney? Okay. Yes, I have a question for the attorney. Attorney Bowman, we are at the very beginning of the meeting.
We're not.
After the mayor, the mayor, I did not get a chance to speak because the mayor had not stopped talking yet. So after he finished speaking, I am now making my motion.
I didn't speak first. The roll call, the pledge allegiance.
Okay.
The approval of the minutes and public comment.
Yes. Yes, and then the reports and the officers.
Going over and over again.
No, I'm.
If you want to change.
Attorney Bowman, attorney Bowman. We're at the very beginning of the meeting where now it is time for officers, departments, trustees and all of us to now speak. I was not able to speak prior to our area to be able to make our comments. So I'm, now that is time for reports, officers, departments, committees. Now it is our, we're in our area and I'm asking, and I know I can make a motion now because I'm in our area. I could not do that in another section, but we're in our section now. So I am motioning to move the accounts payable on the front.
If you're trying, if you're saying that you're going to be not here, so the meeting will still go on. Go ahead.
Yes, I understand that and I did direct it to the mayor. So I also had a question, attorney Bowman.
We could have been there by now if we keep going back and moving.
Attorney Bowman, we're in our area where it's time now for officers, departments and trustees to speak. So since we're on that part of the agenda, I would like to motion.
We're not at that point. I don't know. I'm sure you've been here for many, trustee.
I'm just saying we are in there.
When we all met the agenda, we do it at the very beginning.
I am not permitted to interrupt the public comments. I can't interrupt.
Before the meeting started, you could have said.
I could not interrupt the pledge of allegiance. I can't interrupt.
Before the meeting started, we had a recess between two meetings.
That was a recess. I have to wait until we start. I can't do it while we're in recess.
Okay.
So I'm.
At this particular point in time, unless the attorney tells me different, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not even.
We're in our, we're in our area. I should be able to motion at this time.
No, you can't. Unless I'm.
Mr. Mayor?
Another issue, mayor, if I may.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Is that the order of business is established by ordinance.
Yes, it is.
So that's how it's laid out on the agenda, established by ordinance.
Unless at the beginning of the meeting, someone must have made a motion to do that.
Right.
And that's what it's always been. It's always what we've always done. Did you have something to say to him?
He took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay.
Established by ordinance.
All right. Madam clerk, you're.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, trustees, directors, I'm not going to be before you long. I just have a couple of things to say. First, I would like to invite everyone out to the League of Women Voters of Park Forest Instructional Seminar that is by Zoom that will take place on the 20th at 7:00. If you're interested, I will make certain that you get the Zoom credentials so that you can sign in. Early voting is taking place right during this period. And I placed on the table in the back four locations that are closest to Saw Village. Know that there are 53 throughout the Chicagoland area, but I figured you would want the areas that's closest to us. So if you did not pick it up already, please pick one up. Early voting goes until the 18th of this month and then the next day is the regular elections. And I just make a very, very adamant appeal that everyone exercise their right to vote. This is a critical election and on more than one level. So I'm not just talking presidential because this is just primary. But who's on that, who wins at the primary dictates who's going to be on the ballot in November. So if you have a choice, this is your time to exercise that choice to vote. I was going to mention the cleanup schedule for Saturday, April 27th. The mayor mentioned it and I thank you for it, Mr. Mayor. And at this point, I don't think I have anything else to add. The community partnership is on board with it as well as the ladies of Alpha Sorority Incorporated, just as they were with us last year. They plan to be with us this year to assist our village with cleaning up. I want to say something and I don't want anyone to get offended. Okay? I really don't. And I'm going to preface my statement with that. I know the trustees have Robert Rose Water. They have cheat sheets. They have all of that. And the reason why I know they have it is because what? I gave it to them. But here, the number of people up here and now the audience call point of order. I have to address it. Okay? The audience does not call a point of order. The point of order and other motions and things of the like are called by the assembly. This is the assembly, your trustees. They're the ones who can call a point of order, not our residents. And I mean you no harm and I'm being respectful as I say it. But then to the trustees who scream and holler, point of order. Let me share this with you. The method to do so is to say the words, point of order. But that doesn't mean that you got to scream high and shout it. You get the mayor's attention and you say, point of order. That's decorum. Okay? You say, point of order. Then the chairperson acknowledges the individual. Then the chairperson acknowledges the individual who states point of order and he asks, what is the point? Then you say what the issue was for you to call a point of order. Usually it's called because there was an infraction of some of the rules. Because there is discord or discord in the house is not a reason to scream point of order if it's not anything that is procedurally incorrect, okay? But when you call the point of order, the chairperson, and in this instance, the mayor will say, should say, what is the point of order? That's when you say, whoever called the point of order, you're bringing us back to order. You're stating this person was out of order because, and you don't call the person's name, please. We know we don't like names being called and it shouldn't be. You state what the issue is. Then the mayor decides whether or not that point of order is taken by saying, I accept that, let's move on, or I do not accept it, let's move on. But bottom line, for the record, you have an opportunity to state the infraction that you perceive. But you have to do it, you have to do that. Just screaming point of order, point of order, point of order is you don't get your point across. And that piece is what's important. That's just a little tidbit of, and I'm not going to say Robert Rose Ward or parliamentary procedure. I'm just going to say that's a bit of code. The village, South Village of South Village code is in our code. Let's, when we know better, we do better and let's do better. Because if we do better, we're not going to have what we have every week in what I consider a very sacred place. Let's respect it. Let's do what's necessary to take care of the business of the village. And I know we're emotional, emotional people, but let's just, let's power it down. Power it down. We can't keep going on like this. And Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Okay. Village Treasurer, Mr. Lewis Williams.
No report.
Okay. Village Administrator, Mr. Timothy Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Department Heads. You have my report in front of you. Just wanted to highlight, there was a request made by Trustee Burns to produce a memo regarding a human resources consultant position, which was provided. And also just to make notice to the board that a website demonstration would be, that's the plan for the next committee to hold meeting along with a presentation from SDA regarding economic development activity within the village. That concludes my report. Thank you. Our economic development consultants.
Okay, Corporate Counselor, Mr. Dan Bowman.
No report.
Okay. Police Department, Chief Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Village Board, residents. This evening, we have called for service report since the last meeting, which was February 27th. Till tonight, 12th, the police department responded to more than 497 calls for service. During that same period, officers made 17 arrests. Chat with the chief, everyone knows it's the third Thursday of the, of the month at 6:00 PM here in the Rotunda. This coming Thursday, which is March 21st, 2024, we're going to have a guest speaker for the March Chat, which is Director Kenneth Brown from the Community Expert Organizers Group. Director Brown has worked in child welfare, homeless services, mental behavior, health, and harm reduction. He coordinates several groups where, where residents can get resources. So I would hope that, that we would have a good attendance. Again, that's Thursday, the Chat with the Chief, March 21st, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Additionally, I issued each trustee and clerk and the mayor tonight as a result of our committee of hold a few documents. I just wanted to clarify what you're looking at. I tried to kind of, I had our detectives create a graph so it's a little bit easier to understand. The first document I want to turn your attention to, this is a reference to the flock cameras that was mentioned. The first document I'd like for you to look at is the one, it's two pages. At the top it says, plate reads summary. So what this report is, if you look at the date, this is actually just showing from February to March, from the 12th through the 12th. That first page tells you how many plates were actually read during that time period. As you'll see, it's in your mailbox. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, each trustee was, it was issued to you in your mailbox. I'll give you another copy if you didn't get it. No, you know what, well, well. You know, here, I'll pass it to you. Does everyone have one?
Yes.
Okay. So the first one is going to be the plate, how many plates is, and this tells you how quickly technology works. Just in one month's time, that plate read seven, over 700,000 plates. The second page is total amount of hits during that same period. So what that means is that second page tells you how many vehicles passed in front of those plate readers that were either involved in criminal activity or the person that that vehicle was registered into had recently either had a warrant or committed a crime. That's what those plate readers do. That would be the first report that I was sending you. The second one that you'll see is, it says a hits report. And what you'll see is, this is just over the course since last June. This is a month to month, what you're looking at, if you look down the left side of the column, that tells you, that tells you how many vehicles was run for that day. And when I say run, that means hits. That means that's how many vehicles passed during that time period that had been involved in some level of criminal activity or the owner, registered owner has an active warrant or was wanted for some type of illegal activity. That is the second document. You'll see that's several months, I believe the last month we did was February. There you go, sir, that's the second document. The third document is going to be the final one and that was the one that I had at our first chat with the chief, well, when I first chat with the chief. But you'll see down the left side, I tried to highlight it, it's in yellow. This was a report that we, that we ran and all of the cameras weren't even up yet. And this is a hits report that we started and first, when the first camera was installed back in September of 2022. And this was completed in April of 2023. As you can see, the highlighted areas tells you the status of each vehicle and whether or not we apprehended the person or whether or not the vehicle or the person got away. And the, the rear page of that, that second page gives you a more recent report from the last basically six months. As I explained at the meeting, the more, the more people that we arrest, these are violent offenders, word gets out. There are certain communities, even our own, who develop a reputation that you just can't go through there, commit crimes, and think that you're going to get away. I take pride in the fact that we have officers who actively patrol, who've actively used the system to reduce crime. Our violent crime is down. You can take whatever social media puts out there and runs with it. But the truth is, this is a good community. We do have good residents here. You're very passionate. I can appreciate that. I can appreciate everyone's freedom of speech. But my objectives from day one when I got here was to elevate the quality of life for the citizens here and also start to assist this town and kind of turn the page so that we can nurture a better reputation. It's obvious we're still, it's a work in progress, but you know, don't, don't lose faith. I'm going to put it that way. We're still one village. My father used to say, what you eat don't make me belch. Well, we all live close enough and I don't see no for sale signs and none of the, nobody's, in front of nobody's yard here. So actually what I do eat, you might smell. So we are all one village. I encourage everyone, you know, I've been to, just in the last couple of weeks, other board meetings for other municipalities. We are not a complete island, but one thing that we need to nurture and, and take care of if we're going to do freedom of speech, guys, that's what the three minutes is for. If we can leave the freedom of speech there, our reputation is more protected. What happens is everything comes out in the wash. It doesn't mean that everyone has to be in bed together. In fact, what you don't want is group think. Everyone gets the opportunity to give their, their point. And then we move forward one way or the other. That's what a democracy is about. But I'm not going to harp on that. I did want to at least explain these reports to the board because they kind of get on late. But my commander, who, who's my main person that runs this and monitors this was, he was ill. I'm not going to say he was ill. He had some doctor's appointments. That's his own business. We was not, he wasn't available, so. But once we got it, we made sure we got it to, to the board for you to peruse. Along with, I understand you have some important decisions. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report for tonight. Madam Clerk, Village Board, Citizens.
Trustee Williams. Great, comprehensive report. I know this took a lot of effort, but it really makes a lot more sense to us now while we need those cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee.
Okay. All right, Fire Department, Chief Stephen Barr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees. For the period of February 27th, 2024 through tonight, the South Village Fire Department has responded to 105 calls for service. Last week, I cannot express this enough that as we enter into brush fire season that on the days that are extremely windy, we ask that you do not do any controlled burning. It is easy for these fires to get away, believe it or not, fires do jump. And so we just ask that you do not, if you watch the news, they will let you know if it's a red flag day. Any red flag day means that you should not do any type of controlled burning. On March 17th, which is St. Patrick's Day, the South Village Fire Department is having our annual pancake breakfast with the Easter Bunny at the fire department. All are welcome, the cost for adults is $5 and $3 for kids and seniors. This year, we would do an Easter egg hunt for 0 to 4. It's at 11:00 AM and from 5 to 8 is for at 11:15. For any questions, please feel free to contact me at the fire department at 708-758-2225. Also, every Tuesday of the month, the village does a citywide test of our tornado sirens at 10:00 AM. So you do not have to call the station if you hear the tornado sirens every first Tuesday. What you heard last Wednesday at 11:00 AM, they did go off again last Wednesday at 11:00 AM. The state does a drill every, at least once a year of the tornado sirens statewide. So 11:00 AM on Wednesday, March 6th, that's what, is what you heard. Also, in the case that we lose power, I just wanted to stress again that if you lose power, I remember that your fire department is a warmer center during the cold months and a cooling center during the warm months. And if you are one of those that are on oxygen, then you need to recharge your concentrator or anything like that, the fire department is available for you as well. As always, stay safe and God bless. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Board of Trustees.
May I have a point of privilege to speak to the chief of police?
Point.
Yeah, I want to speak to him.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Oh, you want to talk to him? Oh, separate. I thought you were talking about a question. Oh, okay. Finance Department Director, Renee Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees. I have one report tonight and that is, I have worked with the HR director to fill the two vacant positions within the finance department. That concludes my report.
Okay. Public Works Director, Dante James.
Hello, everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, we're trying to stay up. Been out here since five this morning. Okay, we had 21 appointments. We did nine meter installs, 11 shut offs, 15 turn ons. We also jetted and rodded one mile worth of storm drains and sewer drains. We actually had a blockage that we had to get out there and do it. So if you seen us out there on torrents, that's what we were doing for a whole week. All right? Also, I will be dispatching two teams to go out and patch holes around town, potholes. And let's see here, what else we got? You might see this big giant truck around town. If you're paying attention, try to not run into it because they're out there vacuuming out storm drains and things like that. Spring's coming. We need to make sure our storm drains are clear so we don't have any road hazards or anything like that, residential flooding. I am aware that there are a few street lights out. However, our truck is out for service right now. It has to be repaired and inspected before we can get up in the air and fix those lights. So I am aware that we do have a few of them out. Also, if you get a chance, go across the street over there, take a look at the community center. It had a nice little facelift over there. Who is it? We did a nice little facelift over at the community center. It'd be up and running for business by Saturday morning. So I think Mary has a few events going on over there, so we should be fine with that. I want to address something real quick. Mary, can I say something?
Sure.
All right, cool. So I heard a few times tonight that Public Works or my department for sure. I want to address, if there's anybody in Public Works that's watching or listening to this, I know you guys work every day. I'm out there with you every day. Rain, sleet, snow, I know you guys are working. So I'm going to defend you for that because I know what you're doing. Some people may not think you work. I know damn well you're working because I'm out there every night with you. So I want you guys to know I got your back on that. Don't let nobody tell you nothing different. Next, I want to say, you know, I work maybe five to six days or seven days a week for this village. I came out here to. I came out here to serve the village, the Salt Village. Okay? Um, but you don't get that for free. We work very hard. And every last person that works in Public Works took this job knowing that their entire time working for this village, we're always on call, twenty-four hours a day. So when some of you trustees up there have a problem with your home, remember, we coming, no matter what. We show up and we do our thing. So I take ve- I'm very offended that some of you think that we don't work. We working. Take a look outside, drive around town. You're gonna see us working. I don't wanna hear nothing about you seeing people sleeping in trucks 'cause I ain't having none of that. Ain't none of that going on in my watch. If it ain't about this town and the residents, all of y'all out here, y'all hear me too? Call us when you need us. We gonna pull up and we gonna do the job. Okay? I don't know what went on in the past, but we ain't doing that no more. I can tell you that right now. Mayor, can I be excused? I'm going to sleep. I've been out here all day. Is that okay?
Yes. Thanks, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would like to say though, Mr. James, I don't remember that being stated tonight. I think we are.
Uh, no, 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 no. See, now, I wasn't gonna call no names. I sat here and heard it.
Mr. James.
I heard, nope. I'm going to bed. Good night.
Personally, I would like to say thank you to the Public Works Department. Okay, I don't know who said anything negative about it.
Hey, I'm Black Bart. Have a good rest. Seth, uh, Senior Advisory. Uh, Senior Advisory Committee Chairman, Emmett Farman.
Mr. Mayor.
Where did he go? Okay, okay, go ahead.
Real quick, I did leave one thing out. When you guys do see, and this is very serious, when you guys see our Public Works guys out there working on the side of the road, we just ask that you be cautious and, uh, drive safely around them as they are out there working. We had several incidents as they were out there on torrents where they almost got hit. So we just wanna make sure that, we had to put our EMA out there while they were working because there's so many people almost hit them. So when you see the yellow lights or the flashing red and blues, we ask that you just move over to the other side of the road and just be cautious as driving past.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Um, Chief Barrett, when the workers are out, do you guys use the cones? I, I, I generally see cones when workers are out. Do you, do we use those or horses?
So we do, yes. But everybody doesn't have that. So when it comes to different type of, we have, uh, different type of techniques that we are using when you are, uh, out performing our duties. Uh, so you just gotta pay attention. We have lights o- on the vehicles. There are yellow lights that's on vehicles on the Public Works and then the Fire Department, police departments have red and blues. So we have to be careful when they are out, just to make sure.
Okay. Just, just to add to that, um, it's kinda human nature when people are driving to be in their daily routine. They literally drive those routes without thinking. You know how you get to halfway to work and you start thinking back, did I even look at the stop sign? That kinda thing. Uh, we've had police officers almost run over that's directing traffic. Um, we kick on our lights and sirens behind people. It doesn't mean that it's automatically they're going to do what they're supposed to do. So it is a, uh, unfortunately, even with iDive, it's a very uncomfortable and dangerous kind of element where you're working on, on the roadway. But yeah, we do appreciate that the citizens are, kinda notice that.
Okay.
Listen, I have a question for Chief.
Mm-hmm.
Chief Barrett.
Okay.
Chief Barrett, when you do your, when you do your fundraisers, you, you sell your pancakes or you have the tree of hope or anything that you do that constitute people paying, is there any accountability for how much money you bring in or what happened to the funds you raised?
So the Fire Department has a fire association that is a self-bodied government. They are, they get the funds and they use that to offset what we don't get from the village. Every, every fire, every Fire Department has a fire association that gets, uh, do fundraisers and stuff like that to help with, uh, with supplies and stuff that we need that we might not be able to put in a budget.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I saw Evan here earlier, but he left his, um, report here, so I'll attempt to read that. A report for this Tuesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty four, executive board meeting from the Senior Advisory Council. Breakfast bingo is every first and third Friday from eleven AM to one PM. At the Senior Center, come and enjoy breakfast and play bingo on us or with us. Also join our seniors and senior, uh, seniors and senior fit every Tuesday and Thursday from ten thirty AM to eleven thirty AM. Come out and join our seniors ages fifty and up for a great exercise class. Contact Carol Coleman for more info. Times for the game night are from four PM to eight PM every second and fourth Friday. Come out and join us for games such as Bidwitz, Bunko, Domino's and more. Also, Bidwitz tournament is now scheduled for Friday, March twenty-second, with free food, prizes and music, uh, from four to ten PM. Also, our Senior Health and Resource Fair is now scheduled for Monday, March eighteen, twenty twenty four. Um, set seat flyer for more information. Our first casino trip of the year has been booked for Wednesday, April seventeen, at the Four Winds Casino. The cost is forty dollars per person round trip transportation and twenty dollars worth of credits for food and, and play. Contact Deborah Coney or Carol Coleman to reserve your space. Also, our next committee meeting is Mar- is Thursday, March fourteenth, in the Senior Center at five PM. All are welcome. Thank you in that conclusion report. Emmett Farman, Chairman, Senior Advisory Committee. Oh, I'm sorry, twenty, oh, transfer, you're twenty-five dollars worth of credits for play instead of twenty. I'm sorry, twenty-five dollars worth of credits instead of twenty dollars that goes towards your, uh, gaming. All right, Fire Police Commission, um, do you have anything?
I'll report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, I'm asking resolutions. Um, I think the village administrator, uh, presented this to each and every trustee, so I'll ask for a motion, a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with BNF Construction Co. Services, Inc. for the provision of plan, review, inspections and related services for the village of Salt Village.
So move.
It was moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
No.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
No.
Uh, Mayor votes yes. Motion carried. Um, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement for the divisions of the environmental and, uh, health inspection services.
So move.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee, uh, Carter. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Williams.
The, uh, intergovernmental agreement, the very first line has December first, twenty twenty four. That date needs to be changed to twenty twenty-three.
Okay. We'll do that before we sign, if it, if it gets signed. Any other question? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
Stand.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
I think she goes with the, uh, majority. Motion carried. A resolution authorizing the approval of the five, of five contact and flock cameras systems for the license, license plate recognition services in the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-four with no annual increases until and through twenty twenty-nine.
So move.
It was moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Williams. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Williams.
Uh, the, um, agenda reads, a resolution authorizing the approval of five contracts. It should say five-year contract, just for clarification.
You're right. It should say five-year contract. For the record. Any other question? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
A bang.
Motion is carried. Financial matters. I ask for motion to approve the transfers of payroll accounts payable distribution in the combined amount of three hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and thirty-nine cents.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Carter. Any questions? Trustee Coleman?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, looking at a, uh, document or a letter addressed from, uh, from our attorneys or, uh, Ansel and Glenn?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And based on this letter, which has a bearing on, on what I'm about to, um, what I'm about to a- ask to, uh, adjust. I'm gonna ask to adjust this, if the accounts payable?
Okay.
Okay, looking at this letter, uh, until we get, uh, because I just got this letter tonight. Because I just got this letter tonight, I'd like to take time to address it. So for that reason, I move to approve the accounts payable and payroll dis- disbursements in the amount of three hundred thirteen hundred.
Three hundred and?
Three hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and fourteen cents. Removing from line item one zero zero, zero zero five, seven two six, zero zero zero. Invoices twenty-one sixty-seven through twenty-two zero five. Dates April twenty-first through twenty twenty-three through January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, respectively, in the total amount of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Giving it a total, I'm sorry, giving it a total of... Bear with me. There's a lot of pain there. Well, I already said the total. Three hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and fourteen cents.
Mr. Mayor, trustee Coleman, I think you need to adjust your, uh, can you, can you, um, look at your figures again? You started with three hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven oh four. You're deducting four.
Three hundred thirteen, oh, yeah, three nine.
Even a thirty-nine out.
It's like three hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine, thirty-nine.
Thank you. Three hundred thirty-two thousand.
Yes.
Okay. What is it? What is the amount? Three hundred and what?
Three hundred twenty-two thousand.
Okay.
Eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. You're only removing that one line item, correct? Trustee Coleman?
Yeah, um, not all of it.
No, not all of it. No, 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 just the forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Yes.
Deducted from three seventy-one. It just didn't seem right that it was three thirteen.
Thirty.
So I did the head.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so you're asking for the, for the item to be removed?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by trustee, uh, Coleman, second by trustee Barnes, that the amount of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, um, be taken out of the accounts payable for the line items that were, uh, towed item, um, one zero 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 zero, five seven two eight zero zero zero. And, um, I guess invoice number twenty-one sixty-seven to twenty-two oh five.
Also, ma- uh, Mayor, also taking into consideration the letter dated April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, uh, from Ansel and Glenn.
What does that have to do with the, with this?
Uh, I'd like to get it clarified.
Sorry.
Well, the letter has some information that I think we don't, we can only discuss in closed, closed session.
But right now, you're taking, you're, you're augmenting the, um?
Yeah.
The accounts payable?
Yes.
Okay, so that, all you do is amend it in the motion. So I don't know if the letter has to do anything with that.
Well, well, I'm considering it.
I'm not understanding.
Okay.
I'm not getting, I mean, you, you, you're, you're asking to have this money taken out. I can understand that.
Yes.
What's the letter have to do with it, though?
Well, I don't wanna discuss it right now because it has something to do with an employee. I think it's a closed session.
Okay. Well, then that's why it shouldn't be, you shouldn't be talked about it now. All right, um, Madam Clerk, please call the row for the.
But, Mr. Mayor, only reason why I'm talking about it is because it wasn't given to me in closed session. It was given to me out there.
Okay, I'm just saying, but you're not gonna, you can't, you, you're asking for this motion to, uh, circumvent the, um, accounts payable for this amount.
Okay.
One that has nothing to do with the other at this particular point right now. You, you're just asking to have this money, that money taken out of the account payable.
Well.
Madam Clerk, call the row for me.
Trustee Carter?
No.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp? Trustee Sapp?
Yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'll ask for a motion now to pay accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents.
So move.
Second.
It was moved by trustee, uh, Johnson, second by trustee Carter. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Barnes?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Carter? Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, um, next item?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I need to be excused.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to approve the agreement with Violent Solutions LLC to provide a nationwide ear support and mental health professional networks for police officers to participate with the program, You Never Walk Alone.
So move.
It was moved by trustee, um, uh, Johnson, second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Johnson? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Upstanding.
Trustee Williams? Trustee Burns? Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Okay, uh, the next item is to veto. I am vetoing the ordinance that was brought to the board. The ordinance for the budget that was brought in special meetings, so I'm gonna put that for the record. And, um, it's kinda lengthy, so, but it's, it's a, um, ordinance to approving, I'm sorry, a veto for the ordinance that was, uh, was brought up. So I'm entering that into the, uh, conference and, uh, just letting everyone know that I am vetoing the expenditures and passes of the, that budget that was brought before the board, so I'm vetoing that at this particular point in time. Yeah, I gave everyone a copy. No, no. You got it? I put the veto in, I also put the ordinance that was, that was there, so I'm vetoing that at this particular point in time. All right, last item, I'll ask for a motion to amend ordinance number twenty-four, that zero zero two, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement to lease the village of Saw Village Community Center to the Cook County. And they're, they're asking to change that date. It was for March, they changed that effective date to April 1st, 2024.
So move.
It was moved by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It, it appears that, um, this is not changing the date, but I don't remember some of the language within the ordinance stating what it's stating now. I also remember specifically asking that there's an out clause for, um, every year if we decide that we, either us or the county wants to out, come out of the contract. I don't see that in here, but what, what concerns me is it says here that, um, the village has the power to lease real estate for any term not exceeding ninety-nine years by an ordinance approved by three fourths of the corporate authorities that holding office when in their opinion the real estate is no longer necessary, appropriate, or required for the use of, profitable to, or the best interest of the village. I, I don't remember that language in the original contract, and I asked to see a copy of the original contract, but I didn't get it. Is it the same language that's in there because?
Trustee, yeah, the, this is the exact same legislation ordinance that was passed approximately three weeks ago. The only thing changed is the date. It moved from March until April. There's no other amendments made.
Because what it says here is whereas honor about February 13th, 2024, the mayor and the board of trustees approved a similar, a substantially similar lease to be effective March 1st. So that's why I'm questioning that, because a lot of times when we approve things, we don't see the final result that's been, and I've asked for it, and you said you didn't have the copy back from the county, but I wanna see the signed one that agrees. Did it, did we or did we not say, are we giving them a three-year flat lease or are we gonna have an option, both sides to withdraw if we can?
What was approved was a three-year lease.
So did we not discuss the fact that?
There was discussion and, but it was never proposed or put forward into the ordinance that was approved.
So we will ba- basically give up the community center for three years to the county?
Not at all. It will, there is a portion of the community center that is going to be leased from eight AM till five, but as we discussed, in most cases, it would be until three o'clock. And so it would be there for our use after they vacate, um, the community court and on weekends, and there still is the gymnasium portion that is untouched.
So, so when we discussed the three-year contract and, and I know it was a point that I was adamant about, it was just disregarded and we decided to go with the three-year lease?
It was not disregarded, but it was never put into an amended ordinance or voted for. If you recall, the vote was a bit chaotic at that time, so I don't know if there was, if that, that motion or that amendment was never predict, put to the floor.
But I, I do remember the chaotic, that's why I was asking. I wanted to see the final contract that went through the county, but you said you just haven't received, because there's side copies out there. So when we get the side copy back from the county, can you share?
Sure, sure will.
Any other questions? So we can be clear, so everyone can be clear, the community center will still be available. I think they're only gonna be in there two or three days a week. So I think, um, that it's only, it's still gonna be available during the day. They're not gonna be in there anytime in the evening, so we feel that we're in the evening.
So, Mr. Mayor, won't they have furniture and equipment in there, phones and?
Well, they'll have maybe a phone or maybe office equipment, but, uh, we're gonna, that's what we're trying to get a, um, just office that's there, that's in the community center. Go ahead.
Trustee, they're just gonna be occupying the office that has been vacant, that we have not had any programming or anybody occupying, occupying that, that office ever. That's what they're going to be taking space with.
That's clear, that's clear, buddy. Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Number three.
Trustee Burns? Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
All right, motion carried. Reports of standing committees and trustee comments, um, I might ask the trustees, we met here, we talked, had a few guys talk. I'm hoping that we can just go through this and talk about your committee reports and go from there. So I'll start with public health and safety. I'm sorry, she's not here. I'll start with budget finance and all, trustee Carter. Okay? Um, trust, I'm sorry, orders reviewed, trustee Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My next meeting will be March the twenty, March 25th, Monday, March 25th at seven PM here in the, in the Rotunda.
Okay. Uh, public services, trustee Raymond Johnson.
My next public service meeting will be held here in the Rotunda on Wednesday, March 20th at seven PM. All are welcome. That's the ending of my report, Mr. Mayor.
March 20th?
Yes, at seven PM in the Rotunda.
Okay. Housing and the Government Relations, trustee Sapp?
Uh, because of my, um, present health condition, my meetings probably won't resolve until sometime in April.
Okay, thank you. Uh, committee development, trustee Debbie Williams?
Uh, my next committee meeting will be, uh, March 20th in the Rotunda at eleven o'clock, but I would like to just say something very quickly. Trust, a former trustee, Rosie Williams-Begg, was not able to finish her report. I just wanted to give her number six talking point, and this is what it says. It says, "Lastly, the information the mayor put out regarding Saw Village black history left out a few items. The first black person elected for trustee in Saw Village, the first black library director of the library in Saw Village, and the first black official eligible for a street sign in Saw Village. All of these titles are held by the same black woman. I am she and she is me. So next time you talk, tell me to ask about you, make sure you should ask about me. That's my daughter, and I'm very proud of the fact that that black history comes from my family." So I just wanted to make that mention. Thank you, sir. That is my support.
Okay. Comments for myself, I forgot to mention it in my report, but I also will be vetoing the actions that were brought today as far as the salaries of the individuals that were challenged or changed. So that will be, I will be bringing it before the board, just wanna make a record, I'll be bringing that veto also before the board. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn at this time.
So move.
It was moved by trustee, uh, Johnson, second by trustee Carter. Madam Clerk, if you please call the row.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
Yeah.
Motion carried. Good night, everyone.